Media Dennis and Jim back, Pat, one of our regular citizen advocates, and people that help our community, and of course the staff. Good to have all you all back. And we are, I think, on YouTube tonight, like we have been. So it's good to have that. So be conscious that not just Jim and Dennis are looking at you, but other people on YouTube are looking at you this evening. So welcome, everybody. We will be going into an executive session at the end. We don't expect it to be very long. We don't expect it to take any official actions pursuant to KRS 61.810 or 810, or see discussions of proposed or pending litigation against or on behalf of a public agency. So we will be doing that at the end of the meeting. First thing on our agenda is we have a proclamation. June 14th is National Bourbon Day. And as we didn't, weren't able to meet in person last year, but we're going to meet in person this year. We'll launch in front of Spotty Hall at 11:00 a.m. And I'm going to ask the council to approve our proclamation. I will read it. And then we plan to present this proclamation to the distilleries who are represented that day. So the proclamation reads, whereas Congress declared bourbon as an American native spirit in 1964, making it only, the only spirit distinctible to the United States; and whereas Kentucky is renowned throughout the world as the birthplace of bourbon, with its signature distilling industry producing more than 95% of the world's bourbon; and whereas generations of Kentuckians have continued the heritage and time ownership tradition of crafting fine bourbon, utilizing Kentucky's farming community for natural ingredients and contributing to the Commonwealth's economic development; and whereas 11 unique distillery experiences are located in Barstown, Nelson County, and surrounding counties; and whereas Barstown is known as the bourbon capital of the world, bourbon from Barstown being part of the largest export of all of the best distilled spirits globally. Now therefore, I J. Richard Heaton, Mayor of the City of Barstown, do hereby proclaim June 14th, 2021 to be National Bourbon Day. So I'd ask for a motion to approve this proclamation.
Let's go move.
Thank you. We got a motion by Councilman Hibs. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Scheckels. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you. I just warmed myself up, Audrey, for Fridays. I said I'm going to stutter on Friday. All right. We'll give you some things to do later this evening. Okay. Next up on the agenda, we have a service request from Heartland Youth Village, our city engineer Jessica Bellatro. I'm kind of curious. I know kind of where this is, but who this is.
I don't have the details myself of who Heartland Youth Village is and exactly what they do, other than it was described as a medical facility or rehab facility. But it is being located at the end of Granite Drive across from the Peddler's Mall currently that would sit behind Colton Steakhouse on that property. This request is simply to extend the sewer main. This lot already has service, but to extend a main in front of the proposed building to the far end, to basically a future building, so that this would be a public main being installed such that they don't have to run a separate service through their existing, in front of their existing building. So that lot, what's left there is very large. Again, the Peddler's Mall is on one side of the street, and they have still the opposite side of the street vacant along with the end of the cul-de-sac. So this would basically just extend a sewer main, again, to the actual end of this, of the cul-de-sac. And they're asking us to take that in. Upon that meeting, it's the division of water requirements and being constructed for all state multiple pipelines.
Thank you, Jessica. Anyone have any questions, Jessica, on this? I think we all kind of know the location. It's fairly straightforward. So if there's no questions, I'd ask for a motion to approve the request from Heartland Youth Village to, for the city to accept the sewer extension in our system after installed per our specifications.
So moved, Mayor.
Motion by Councilman Doan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Buckman. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you. Next, we have a change order on our Public Works Building. Jessica would like to speak to that as well.
Yes. At the, just before the bid went out, there were a couple of items on the electrical plan that were not brought up in time before the bid to really address. So we knew going into the bid opening that there were a few electrical items that weren't clear on the plan that would need to be addressed at a later time. That's what this $11,649.50 was basically to make some electrical connections that were not shown on the plan during, at the bid time. If these, if that had been shown, this value would have been included in the original bid. It's not something that we can live, do without. Again, it's just something to clean up the contract there to include running that electrical to the garage doors and some conduit and so forth to actually hook it up that was not clear. The other small item was just some, the original plan showed that had this plumbing coming out of the building from the bathrooms before it went through our oil, water, and grit separator. And we actually need that to come in after that. So you don't want to run sanitary waste through what's intended to capture oils and grit from the shop area. So this was just a little bit of extra piping to tie it in in the appropriate place according to meet plumbing code and so forth. So that was for $862.50. And it was just for that, a small amount of plumbing rerouting from the original plan. So that puts the whole total change order for $12,512. They've asked for additional three days. At this point in time, the project is scheduled to be completed. I believe it's mid-August, and they're on schedule to meet that.
Okay. Any questions, Jessica, on this?
It's an additional three days for everything. That's the sewer.
Yes, that was for the sewer and the electrical to the overall contract time.
And I think Jessica's correct. These items weren't included on the original plan. If they had been, they'd have been bid. Project would have been a bit higher. So it's not like we missed something. We kind of knew this was going in. All right. I'm going to ask them for a motion to approve the change order number seven, Public Works Building, for $12,512, as presented by our city engineer and recommended by the city engineer.
So moved, Mayor.
Motion by Councilwoman Hart. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Councilman Scheckels. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you. I'm going to have the HRB at this meeting. Two council meetings, minutes, one of our regular meeting, and then the other one on May 25th. The other one on May 27th, where they did a annual, formal annual budget. I'm going to hand it off officially to you guys after we did our two work, kind of work sessions on that. Is there any corrections or additions to either one of the minutes? If not, then we can prove those by unanimous consent. All right. Moving along. Calling our CFO, Aaron Bowles, to give us our main financial report. We'll be doing our first reading, work with our first reading after that.
All right. Thank you. As you guys are pulling up the, the handout that I posted, just to review, just a quick review, May was substantially better than April with revenue of both general fund and the combined utilities up $1.6 million over April's numbers. And expenses were down $483,000 from April. Had a really good month in May. General fund revenue came in around $1.4 million. 68% of that was from occupational license fees and net profits. As you can see by the chart, we received $770,000 of occupational license. That puts us surpassing our budget by $555,000 already. We're at about 111% so far this year. So revenue has come in substantially better than we thought going in. Just preparing for COVID, you know, we were trying to cut back as much as we could, but revenue is looking very good in occupational license fees. Net profits is again over budget. Year-to-date, we're at $947,000. So this is about 108% of budget here. Other revenue items that came in, we received our final payment from the TAP grant for the sidewalk project at the street budget. Restaurant tax came in, $133,000. That was actually two months' worth, just some carryover timing of when I received those checks from tourism. And for the year, we're looking at 99% of our budget received already of revenue, $11.8 million for the general fund. Expenditures were at $693,000 in the general fund this month. Salaries and benefits took up 54% of that. And you can see on that chart, the restaurant tax was the next largest item, and that's just a direct offset of the revenue that we received. Get that directly back out to the tourism commission. And then over $73,000 we had in street paving. We're just trying to spend the rest of our budget for the year. Some areas we had done were North and South Forest Street, Reshir, and Beale. I believe that is the cleanup of that phase one of the sewer project that we had. So we went in and repaid all those areas.
Is there much more left on painting for this year, Jessica? Do you know?
We've completed all of our resurfacing for this 2020-2021 year, just like.
Total year-to-date expenditure for just under $9.5 million, and they're running about 82% of the budget in the general fund. Again, revenue's looking very good in the general fund. Combined utilities, we had $4.4 million revenue come in, 70% of that being service charges. KIA loan sewer projects received $593,000 in reimbursements related to the ongoing sewer projects of Rowan Creek and the pump stations. And we got a fairly large payment from the EDA grant related to the Rowan Creek project, $606,000 coming in. We'd budgeted $1.6 million for that, for this year, but we could probably get another $200,000 to $400,000 this month possibly committed. So we'll recognize that as revenue in this year with the remaining balance coming in FY '22.
You said that's on the EDA grant?
Yes, EDA grant. Year-to-date revenue in the combined utilities is about $37.4 million, or 82% of budget. Moving on to expenses. Month-to-date, we had $3.4 million of expenditures. Highest, highest category would be electric purchase for resale, $873,000 expensed in the month of May. Cable affiliate fees is another big one, $507,000. Just some other projects going on. I just tried to list out some of the higher-dollar items there for you. Year-to-date, our expenditures are about 81% of budget, running around $38.7 million. And I had a couple of notes there that we're currently using $1.3 million of our reserves to fund the combined utilities operations and capital projects. And just, that's better than what we had budgeted. We budgeted to use around $2.2 million. So things are improving in the combined utilities also. And the last section there, the cash, cash balances increased $1.8 million. We're running about $12.4 million worth of cash investments. Of that $1.8 million increase, $840,000 came from state and federal grant programs. So about 45% of that was grant program-related. Investment remains steady, about $12 million. And then that last chart, health insurance expenses, just wanted to give you guys an update, just showing that claims are coming down. You can see, I've detailed out 19, 20, 21. And 18 was actually around, on the claims is the solid line. So FY '18, I didn't put on there, but it was around $1.2 million this time in FY '18. So FY '19 was an oddity for it dropped so much. But we are trending down. Expenses are trending down over last year. So we're hoping that trend continues. So going into FY '22, we don't have to incur such a large expense.
Karen, can I ask a question in the combined utilities?
Uh huh.
Operation capital, that $1.3 million, is that used in some of the money we got from, not the Karen money, this is called, the other act that we get?
We haven't received any other funds.
1.7, did you figure that in there?
No, uh-uh. That is coming, we haven't received it yet, but it's supposed to be coming.
This is your 22.
Yes. So we had budgeted going into FY '21, we'd already budgeted to use $2.2 million reserves to fund some of these projects that we have going on. But currently, we're only utilizing 1.3 of that.
Anyone have any other questions, Aaron, on the financial reports? We did, as Aaron said, we did forecast a really conservative budget because we didn't know what the pandemic was going to do to us. I don't think we ever talked budgeting for pandemic. And Aaron went to school and definitely didn't when I went to school. So it's, it was a crapshoot. So it's best to err on the side of being conservative. So I did a good job on that. So it also points to that, you know, the local economy has come back reasonably well. And while we didn't get hit as nearly as hard as some others around the country, so we're blessed in that regard. All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Aaron on this? Okay. All the, all the long meetings we've had and all the mini-meets we've had, we get to do something a little more simple. Do a first reading on our fiscal year '22 annual budget. So would ask one of our council members if they would introduce the ordinance B 2021-06. Ask our city attorney to read it in summary.
If I may be in order, I'd like to introduce the summary of ordinance B 2021-06, which is the annual budget for the fiscal year July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. And have our city attorney.
Thank you. Summary of ordinance number B 2021-06. Annual budget for the fiscal year July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. An ordinance adopting the City of Barstown, Kentucky, annual budget for the fiscal year July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022, estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of the city. Whereas an annual budget proposal and message has been prepared and delivered to the city council. And whereas the city council has received and reviewed the budget proposal and made desired modifications, now therefore be it ordained by the City of Barstown, common law of the Tennessee section one, that the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021, and ending June 30th, 2022 is hereby adopted as set forth below on the chart. Section due, that any and all ordinance is inconsistent with this ordinance are hereby repealed. And section three, that this ordinance shall take effect July 1st, 2021, after its passage of publication as required by law.
And this is our first reading, and it summarizes the budget that we worked on over the last few meetings. So we don't have to take any official action, but I think it should be noted, you notice that, again, to balance this budget, we are forecasting we're going to be using reserves of $2.253 million to balance. So that's primarily utility side, where that's coming from. So it's just a lot of needs. Jessica's smiling, do likewise. She doesn't smile during the daytime. She's got a lot of work going on.
And again, back to your point, Bill, that $1.7 million listed here is from the ARP funds. That's, that's what we're expecting to get.
This year.
This year.
It's budgeted.
In the next couple of weeks. Those other uses of unrestricted reserves, there's, I don't, I just show revenue expense. I don't show a beginning balance here. So although it shows almost $40,000 out of the depreciation fund, it's already has $540,000 in it. Same thing with the sewer enhancement fund. I show a use of $1,601,000. The balance as of May 31st was $1.45 million. So we have a healthy beginning balance. And we're just going to be utilizing the money that we have available to help offset some of these project costs.
Okay. Any other questions for Aaron this evening?
I'd just like to make a comment, Mayor. I thought your letter attached there was helpful to me. Was anybody else? I thought it was well done. Thanks for doing that. Helped me to understand what's going on there better.
Thank you. Aaron helped, Aaron helped with the numbers, and I tried to explain them.
Yeah. I thought you explained it okay.
All right. That'd be the first reading. We'll go into a second reading our next meeting. Next item on the agenda is important staff and annual committees. I know Chief Manley's got a couple announcements regarding our department.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. It's going to be a busy month, so we'd like to reach out and invite everyone to attend some events we're having. June 23rd at 8:30 a.m., we're having, or we're hosting, supporting, I just went blank, Chamber Connect Breakfast at the new firehouse. So we'd hope that everybody could come to that. That runs from 8:30 to 9:30. Then the very next day, the 24th, from noon to 5:00, we're having the Battle of the Badges Blood Drive. So if anybody would like to come over at the place there on Fourth Street, the old Union Hall, that'd be there. You come in, you sign up who you want to get blood for, police, fire, or EMS. Now, we're hoping everybody goes for fire this year. We haven't come over the badge yet. We're ready to come over the badge for the winners.
Where is the location on Fourth Street?
The Knights of Columbus Hall. I think they call it the Barstown Chamber.
Bed Center.
Yes.
It's the Union Hall. I said, I didn't think we have one. That's found on Fern Creek.
Yeah, it's the old days and stuff, yeah. But hopefully, everybody can come by. If not, maybe recruit some people to come over. Our goal for that drive is 40 units. So we're kind of high on that drive, so hopefully, we can reach that. And then on the 27th, is a Sunday, everyone should have gotten an email, we're going to have the official dedication of the new firehouse and also the Francis Lydian Conference Room that day. That starts at 3 o'clock also. So we hope to see everybody there.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Nice to be able to finally show it off to the public.
It is. Yes, it is.
It's been in the news for a long time now. Okay. Next item, you don't have anything on unfinished business? Chief Crest, you said you didn't want to have any pork this evening?
No, I think you have discussed us losing our canine at the last meeting. So we do have the insurance that will help us business forward for picking another one.
All right. Under new business, you have reappointment for Davis Lee Tiger Houston for a three-year term on this committee. Tiger's been on that committee for many, many years and happy that he's continuing wanting to serve. He's got a lot of experience, so he'll be another good three-year member. So in a motion to appoint Tiger Houston to a three-year term from July through July, July 21th through July 9th, 2024.
So moved, Mayor.
A motion, you have a second?
Second, Mayor.
Second by Councilwoman Hart. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's carried. Tiger said the paint was too good. He wasn't able to, didn't get off of that. Okay, it's fireworks time of the year. Starting to get some applications for these locations. So we've got two this evening. One from the Barstown Apostolic Sanctuary, TMT fireworks. That location, pull up. Yeah, this is at Walmart. Request by Pastor Akri. So what I do, I guess we're going to do both of these together. And then the second one, St. Catherine Academy's going to be at O'Brien's Farm Equipment out of New Daniel Road. St. Catherine Academy, purchased from New Haven. Both of them have their nonprofit statuses in place. So I need a motion then to approve both of these fireworks applications.
I'll make that motion there. I'm trying to flick back over and see what they were. Like make a motion to approve the Barstown Apostolic Sanctuary and St. Catherine Academy for their fireworks.
Thank you. The motion by Councilman Buckman, is there a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
Second by Councilman Doan. Any other discussion? Right. Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carried. They did tell us, just like everything else in this crazy supply chain issue, just like chips for automobiles that come from China, so the fireworks. So they said, you better get there early. Make till July 3rd, there might not be anything there. All right. We got some, a couple cemetery deeds. Mary Seeger is transferring eight graves. I guess, is that transferring to other family members in their name?
Correct. That's settling the estate for Parry Seeger.
Okay.
Transfer those into three different trusts.
All right. And then, am I going to mess this one up? Lamisha, Lamisha Maxwell and Joanne Simpson, both purchasing one grave site each. So if anyone's got any issues, we can approve those by unanimous consent. All right. Then is any council members, anything we need to report to council this evening?
I have one thing, Mayor. Just noticing that we, I may have missed this at the beginning of the meeting, but we kind of skipped over the receive input from the public. I noticed Pat was sitting out there, and he was holding the paper. I just wanted to make sure we gave him the opportunity to speak since this is our first meeting back in person.
I have nothing. Just good to be here.
That's good enough.
He had a non-city direct request from his wife to me directly that he talked to me about before the meeting. But he gave me plenty of time. It's next year before I have to try to figure out how to get. to get it worked out for her, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
We've had it back, Pat. I'd like to show the interest. If nothing else, I don't really have anything to, to report as far as mayor's update, so could then, I'd ask for a motion to go into executive session pursuant to K I A sixty-one point eight one zero one C, discussion of pending litigation against or on behalf of the public interest.
So moved, Mayor.
We have the motion, is that, motion by Councilman Hibs, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Councilman Scheckels. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Need to go into executive session. Anticipate, it'll take very long. Anticipate any official action, but if you want to stick around.
That looks good.